I now call this meeting of the School Board of Independent School District. Sorry, I now call this meeting of the School Board Independent School District 624 to order. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ellison.
Here.
Skar.
Here.
Strife Oji.
Here.
Thompson.
Here.
Arcan.
Here.
Daniels, here.
Okay, can you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have, we have before us an agenda. Can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Okay, Thompson, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ellison. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none. This will be a voice vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. We also have before us a consent agenda. This contains various business items that come to us monthly, including donations. We are truly grateful for the support that the community shows us each month to our staff and students. They want to thank everybody who has contributed. Can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
So moved. A second?
Second.
Second. So it was moved by Ellison, second by, okay. All right, do we have any discussion? Mr. Skar, I believe you had some questions?
Right, I have question, thank you. I have questions on the payment of invoice report. So I'm assuming that this report is designed around public transparency and for the board's benefit, is that correct? That report, this report?
Yes, this is a list of all of the payments that we've made as a school district since the last board meeting.
So it's designed, it's designed to be transparent to the public and to the board?
Yes.
Okay, thanks. So on that report, you have, it's organized in a way, just so that I know by check numbers, right? So then it's-
Check numbers or payment numbers, yes.
And you have different checks for different things. So for a V check, the type, check type V, what is that for?
That would be a void.
Pardon me?
A void.
So that's a voided check.
Mm-hmm.
So an R is?
A regular check.
I would not have guessed some of these. A C?
So Cs are kind of strange. They're where if we have multiple invoices to an entity, it prepares our remittance advice to indicate like exactly which invoices are, are paid. So like Amazon would be a common one where we pay many invoices and it takes up many check stubs essentially, so it's like, kind of like a canceled check essentially, I think maybe is what the C stands for.
So a C-
Because it has many invoice numbers on it.
I see. That one I kind of figured because you had all zeros and then at the end you have a number. And then what is it made for?
ACH checks.
Oh.
Or ACH payments.
And there's a unique check number sequence that you, so the check numbers like, if you go down to, let me see here, so the 999 series of checks, why are those, why are those different?
So those are-
Thank you, sir.
Appreciate it.
Those are set up like in our system, I guess, a wire payment essentially, or like an ACH transaction that's automatically pulled from our accounts. So we initiate all of the, all of the top checks where it's like, starting with a 147, those are paper checks that get issued. The 999 checks are amounts that are automatically pulled. So like we might go out to the IRS, for example, and we initiate the payment on that way, and then it pulls it from our bank account versus us pushing it out. And then if you go to like the 25, 26 checks, those are ACH payments that we push out. So we got a paper invoice, we're cutting a check, an ACH payment that we're pushing out versus them, the entity pulling it from our account.
I see, I understand, thank you. So how would I understand like capital expenditure checks versus other checks, or consultant and legal fee checks versus capital checks or other transportation checks, things like that? How can I tell by looking at this report?
This report won't show you that. So this report is just the listing of checks that needs to get approved by the school board. That would be a different type of report that we'd have to create.
Okay. It would seem to me that that would be more help, more helpful to the, at least for the board and for the public if we had it categorized by expenses, categories. I also saw that there were several solar leasing and solar expenses. And I, I know that we have a turnkey project with Ideal Solar. However, we had expenses to SolarWinds, Green to Solar, Leasing and Anchor Solar.
Mm-hmm.
What are those for?
So the, those are all related to our solar projects. The Ideal Energies is the vendor that we use.
Right.
The way that those solar projects work is they have a separate, like, like a separate entity with a separate tax ID based on the year of the solar lease. And so some of the early, I believe some of the early ones were actually, like their name to the IRS was Anchor. So it really is ideal, it's just we have to pay what the IRS is expecting.
I see, yeah, that makes, that makes sense. We had fees to District 916. One was 87, 448. Another one was 43, 056. And then I saw a credit for that same amount, 43, 056, and 101, 414. Is, are those like annual fees that we pay to District 916?
Yeah, we work with 916 on a variety of items, and I can't speak specific to this particular, you know, invoice, I'd have to go and pull it, but we contract with them for different staffing services largely related to special services.
I understand.
Yep.
Okay. There was a, a check to Watson Consulting Group, does that ring a bell?
Mm-hmm, that's who we use, that was assisting our transportation RFP. So for our bus services.
So when I looked up Watson Consulting Group, it looks like they did consulting around diversity, equity, inclusion?
Nope, nope.
That's not the right one?
No.
So I looked up the wrong one?
Correct, yep.
Okay.
I would imagine you can't really, this is just kind of a one-man show, so I imagine he doesn't even really have a website.
Oh, I see, thank you.
Yep.
I also noticed that there was costs to, or invoices from Brightstone Care. Does that ring a bell?
No, I'm not, Brightstone?
Yeah, I think it was Brightstone.
It's not coming up if I search it.
Brightstar.
Brightstar, sorry. Thank you.
Hmm.
It, it looked like it was like medical care, medical related costs, and I'm just thinking, Wayne, when I asked you about that, about the clinic, you mentioned that that was pretty much, we had no costs associated with that. That was something that was reimbursed to us? Does that ring a bell?
It could be something with our senior center. It was, you know, at $2,000, I don't, I don't get that granular in a lot of our invoices.
Okay. There was one that I couldn't find, which was Local LLC for $7,500. It's on page 15.
Yeah, I don't know, I'd have to, I'd have to look.
I could not find that one on the, I couldn't find that one.
Like if you just Google it, you mean?
Pardon me?
Like you just Googled that term, Local LLC?
Yeah, I couldn't find them.
Yeah, but, you know, we have to pay the, the name that's registered with the IRS. And so very often a business will be doing business as White Bear Lake Area Schools, but then if you would pay us, you pay us as ISD 624. You know what I mean? And so it doesn't surprise me that some of these names, if you Google them, you're not going to find anything because that's simply their like registered IRS name.
Oh, so for this one, we don't know exactly what that was for?
I mean, yes, we certainly do.
Okay.
But it doesn't surprise me that if you Google the vendor name, that you won't necessarily get a hit.
So what was that one for? Do you know offhand?
Well, I don't know off the top of my head, but I can tell you.
Okay. Well, I don't want to, you know what, I don't want to blindside you on some of these smaller ones. It's more of a prop, some of these larger ones. There was also one for 91,000, 998 to Renaissance, which I couldn't find anywhere. Does that ring a bell?
That's a curriculum, that's a curriculum company.
And then Live Nation Worldwide, do you know what that one was?
Is that our face? Look at that.
It looked like something for ticketing or entertainment?
Yeah, well, it certainly wouldn't, that, Live Nation is used by a lot of different companies, so it could be, you know, somebody attended a conference and they register through Live Nation. That would, I mean, that would be my guess. We're not like in the, we're probably not going to a concert, would be my guess.
Mm-hmm.
But without a, you know, I'd have to look, I'd have to-
Okay, well, thank you.
Oh, no, you know what it is? I can tell you what it is. It's the entity that, that we're doing prom through. They own the rental center.
Oh, I see. I figured it was event related, I was just, I wanted to figure out what exactly it was for. Also, I noticed that we write, this is kind of nitpicky, so we write, but you have to realize, you know, once you're an auditor, you're always an auditor. So we write checks to the IRS, and you know, with all the changes going with the IRS, is it, should we, should we standardize when we write something to the US government, like Department of Treasury?
Those are the items that are automatically pulled from our account.
Okay.
So they're set up as that in our system, but-
So that's how it's set up?
It's a, yeah, an ACH that pulls out, so it doesn't matter.
Okay. I didn't have any other ones, thank you for answering my questions. And I would like, I would like you guys to consider, you know, making it easier to read from a, from a board perspective and from a public perspective to give more context into what these are. Maybe provide, you know, whether it's a capital expenditure, whether it's an expense, whether it's legal fees, consulting fees, I would ask you to consider that because it'd be super helpful when I'm reviewing these. And I didn't mean to put you on the spot, but you did really well. Thank you very much for asking, answering my questions.
All right, thank you. We still have the motion on the table, and I just thought, I also want to mention that if you look over this, you can always, you know, send her an email or send Wayne something if you have questions too, if we want answers. You can always ask before the meeting if you'd like.
I've done that, thank you.
Okay, just trying to make it easier for everybody.
Yeah, I know.
Okay. So before us, we have a agenda, we have a motion to approve the consent agenda. Any further discussion? Hearing none, this will be a roll call vote. I'll ask the clerk to call the roll.
Ellison.
Aye.
Skar.
Aye.
Strife Oji.
Aye.
Thompson.
Aye.
Arcan.
Aye.
Daniels, aye.
Okay, motion carried. Now, we have our consent agenda. We had nobody sign up for public forum tonight, so we, we have no public forum, so we're going to go right on to C1 Superintendent's Report. Dr. Kazmicek.
All right, thank you Chair Arcan, members of the board. We are excited to welcome students back for the 25, 26 school year very soon. Families can find school supply lists, beginning of the school year events, and district calendars on the Back to School page of the district's website. As we prepare for the new school year, we ask families to take a moment to log into ParentView and complete the annual family update. This is essential to provide schools with accurate and up-to-date information for every student. Please complete the application for educational benefits linked on the Back to School and Nutrition Services pages of our website for the opportunity to qualify for discounts on sports and activity fees, advanced placement test registration, college applications, and more. Paper applications can be requested by contacting the Nutrition Services Department. When we begin school in September, family, staff, and community members are invited to share Back to School pictures on Facebook using hashtag Back to School Bears for a chance to be featured in a September Community E-Newsletter. Photos may be emailed to communications@isd624.org. Today is the start of the fall sports seasons, which I was able to kick off at midnight as a spectator at the football team's midnight madness practice. District community members age 65 and older are invited to request a lifetime senior activity pass, which allows free entry into home athletic contests. Find a news post on the district website to apply for a free pass, or just call the superintendent's office and we'll get you set up. And the high school is pleased to announce that Taylor Tavet has been chosen to serve as the new Assistant Activities Director. Taylor comes to White Bear from St. Paul Academy and Summit School Programs, where she has most recently held the positions of Associate Athletic Director and Sports Information Coordinator. We continue to hire for the 25, 26 school year. We need substitute teachers, bus drivers, paraeducators, extended day and nutrition services staff members, and more. We offer competitive wages, flexible work hours, and a chance to make a difference for kids in our community. Find job postings on the website under Employment. And as we prepare for the 25, 26 school year, we want to remind families that we are currently accepting enrollment. Please get your child enrolled today so we can welcome them into the White Bear community and get them prepared for a terrific school year. Find information on the district website under Enroll.
Thank you, Dr. Kazmicek. Anybody have any questions? All right, thank you very much. We're going to move on to something very exciting, it really is. Summer construction updates. Mr. Wall and Mr. Fernandez?
I want agents here. Drawn footage.
I know. We're going to get some facts here in a minute.
Good evening Chair Arcan, members of the board. Dr. Kazmicek, we've had a busy summer construction schedule, as we have for quite a few summers now. And so we'd like to review the projects that we've been working on this summer, and Kevin Fernandez is our Director of Building Operations, who's been really working closely with all the projects. And then with us also is A.J. Lillsby from Kraus Anderson, who is representing all the work that Kraus Anderson does for the school district. So A.J. will walk us through the work that Kraus Anderson's been overseeing for us this summer.
All right. So we've had three primary summer projects this, this go around here. Central Middle School Phase 2 renovation, the Mariner Middle School LTFM HVAC improvements. Look here, is it not on? There we go. And then third, the Sunrise Park Phase 2 renovations. So at Central Middle School, do a quick high-level summary recap here, but the total bid day construction hard costs were just under $24 million. So through June of this year, that's an average of $844,438 a month. So that's a lot of scope going in in one shot there. But the Phase 1, Summer 2024, that included the gym addition completion, which is what that picture there is, also included some industrial tech areas, locker rooms, multipurpose band and choir, and then science as well. So if you can't remember what the phasing of that was, that little green square was the Gymnasium Storm Shelter addition, and then all of the pink areas on Level 1 and 2 there were what that Phase 1 area is. The blue portions, which is on Level 1, 2, and 3, is what we're currently got going on right now. So in that blue area includes the kitchen and cafeteria renovation, renovating the old district offices, art, fitness, counseling, and learning commons. So we've got a couple pictures here, but some of the additional things that we've got going on over there right now. Inside the media center, they got ceiling grid installation underway and soffits being drywalled outside of that space. Inside the kitchen and cafeteria, they got equipment installation in progress. Kitchen hood complete. Ansel system, which is the fire suppression system, is installing this week. The tile work is wrapping up, coiling doors are being installed, and the cafeteria flooring has begun. In the unlikely event that you needed to store a bunch of lunch trays in that cafeteria, you could store 5,703 of them, just in case you needed to know. So for the flooring on 3rd floor and 2nd floor, they've got that going down right now, as well as moisture mitigation ongoing in the fitness room with flooring to follow. Inside the bathrooms, they also got the fixture installation in progress. So this picture is from the cafeteria, so you can see the colorful columns and the wavy soffits and fancy lighting. And then this is in Area G, Level 2, one of the science rooms coming together. And then a likely familiar room, but yet unfamiliar now, the old boardroom, the fitness room. So you can see they got the floor leveling product down and moisture mitigation in the flooring coming up right after that. Second project we got going on this summer is Mariner Middle School HVAC improvements. So the Phase 1, well, I'm getting ahead of myself here, the, the high-level recap, so the total bid day construction costs for that were $12.5 million. So through July of this year, that's an average of $588,235 a month. So this being what we call a summer slam, may have heard that, may, heard me say that a couple times, this work, while it's 12 months, two summers, technically all that work is actually happening in three-month chunks. So at our peak at this project, we hit $2,650,711 in a month, work going in place. So in construction, typically what we would consider light speed is 2 million. So it was a lot of folks putting in a lot of hours to make that project come together the last two summers. So part of that Phase 1 was the structural reinforcements for the HVAC piping, as well as some of the snow load requirements, and then new ceilings and lights where we were going through with that piping. The Phase 2 portion of that work is the remaining structural reinforcements for the HVAC piping and the ducting, along with the ceilings and lights, and then toilet and ADA renovations. Some of the other work that we've got going on right now actively, the ceilings and the classrooms are getting completed, grid and lights are being installed in the cafeteria and the kitchen. Flooring and wall finishes, they got the slip-resistant flooring and FRP in the à la carte room all done. Tile is done in the bathrooms, as well as wrapping up in the kitchen. Inside the kitchen, they got the coiling doors installed, the kitchen hood installed, and the ansel systems ongoing this week. And then walls and ceilings, their framing, drywalling and tavings all done, hard-lit ceilings underway in the locker rooms. And the mechanical systems, they got four of five air handlers set in the penthouse. So there are 67-plus fans in the buildings as a part of this project, excluding the existing, that's capable of moving enough air for 100,000 people to breathe for one minute. Or fill one and a half Goodyear blimps. And that's based on the average person breathing in two cubic feet per minute, so we did the math. Electrically, they got 10 of the electrical rooms complete, and then they're working on wrapping up the penthouse right now, along with all the AHU wiring, which you'll see in a little bit. And then they're working on final cleaning and carpet. So it's hard to really see, but the grid is in, and above that grid is thousands and thousands and thousands of hours of work with the structural reinforcements that had to go in. And there was, I stopped counting, but it was well over 788 lineal feet of piping, and that was only in the 4-inch size. So it's, there was a lot, an immense amount of work that went into these projects that you will never see. So this picture also does no justice. I don't know if anybody's been in that penthouse before, but what you can't tell from the picture is those are like 22-foot tall ceilings, so that air handler and that return air duct is fascinatingly large when you walk in there. And then another shot of the corridors, so again, a lot of work going to be getting covered up, never to be seen again. But another fun fact here too, at this project, we had almost 85,000 square feet of open ceiling, so typically on a light to medium renovation, we would try not to exceed 35,000 square feet in any given summer. So again, coupling that with the 2.5 million, we tackled almost double what you would try to do in a single summer. So they have been working lots of hours, working very hard to keep that thing moving forward. The third project, Sunrise Park, where we're sitting, so high level again, total bid day construction cost here was about $29 million. So through June of this year, that's an average of $1,395,081 a month. So part of that Phase 1 was obviously the district offices and the boardroom that we're sitting in now. Phase 2 portions of the work was included, the senior center, gymnastics room, well, gymnasium, kitchen and cafeteria, and the courtyard as well. So that's a picture of the community room, we'll have a couple more pictures going up. But as a part of the current updates right now, we've got Area A in the senior center moving, obviously underway, and punch list is ongoing. Area B in the gym and the locker rooms, gym's basically complete, if you've seen it, I'm sure you probably have, but just got a few more gymnastics equipment pieces to work through, and then the locker rooms are just awaiting benches and plumbing fixtures. Inside the kitchen, they've got the equipment going in, and the existing hood and above-ceiling MEP is ongoing. And then with regards to the Phase 3, which will be turning over in the spring of '26, they got mechanical and plumbing roughens just about wrapped up throughout, both above-ceiling, in-wall, and tunnels. Speaking of tunnels, there are over 3,863 lineal feet of tunnel below this building, which is long enough to stretch from Sunrise Park to Mariner in a straight line, which is 3,487 feet from corner to corner. So approximately three quarters of a mile's worth of tunnel. Also working on electrical roughens and then drywall, they're closing up the walls right behind them. So this is the circulation area outside of the reception there. And then the gymnasium, fun little foam pit in there now too, that may or may not have been tried out. So then a part of that Phase 3, turning over spring '26, we've got the early childhood area and the transition education center as well, so more updates to follow as we get through that. And then this is a picture inside Phase 3, just kind of rough stages of where we're at. What you're looking at right now is the future maker space. So if you see kind of where the casework is sitting in the middle below that isolated soffit, that's where that maker space is going to be. And then all the, a couple of the office spaces with the drywall, mudding, sanding, ready for paint.
These I have, you know about these? We had two playground projects this summer too that are just being completed now. This is an inclusive playground at Birch Lake Elementary, and that project, both, well, both Birch Lake and the, and the Outer Lake Playgrounds are inclusive playgrounds, and as opposed to our previous playgrounds, this creates more space within the playground that our students with disabilities can access, rather than just being able to access a small portion of it, this allows them to access the majority of the playground. So that is at Birch Lake, we encourage you to take a look at that. If you're, get over to Birch Lake, go look at the new playground, and then the next one, hit it again, is the Outer Lake Playground, and both of those are just wrapping up this week. Kevin, are there, I think maybe just, it's just the chips that we're needing to put in?
Yep, they have 72 hours to cure the horn and plays, and now a number of chips to clean up.
Yeah, so thanks to, oh yeah, your microphone, thanks to Kevin Fernandez and his team for the work that they've done. Kraus Anderson does an outstanding job, and A.J.'s team is full of outstanding professionals, but a really heavy lift goes with Kevin Fernandez, who's on top of all of these projects, doesn't miss details, he's right there in all of them. So thank you Kevin for the work you do on these. Kevin had a head hair like Elvis Presley before this summer slam started.
Anybody have any questions? Yes, Mr. Skar.
Just a comment, I, you know, it's been really exciting to watch this progress over the last number of years and to see some of the really big projects, like the high school and exciting things like new gymnasiums, but I'd really like to see the structural and the HVAC, because I have a kid at Mariner, you know, and I, I want my kid and all the other kids to be in a building that is safe. And I think a lot of students all over the state and the country are in buildings that they're breathing in mold, or there's leaks, or things are unsafe. And so I'm just great, I'm grateful to our community for not only supporting the new construction projects, but also just the projects that make our buildings safer for our kids. And so even though we'll never see it, it makes me feel better that it's being done. So hats off, thank you.
Other questions or discussions? Yes, Mr. Skar.
This is facilities related, but I noticed somebody put a clock in the back, so I just want to recognize that person and thank him for that, because I asked for that, I owe you a cup of coffee, whoever that was. Thank you. And, you know, maybe Kraus Anderson did a great job, but let's not give him too big of a head, right? So, oh, by the way, I did take a tour, and thank you for arranging it with Matt, on the high school HVAC, because I come from a HVAC background, so, and it was beautiful. It was really well done, spent a lot of time in boring areas, so it looked really good. One question that I had is, you know, it's, I think the district did a great job- One question that I had is, you know, it's, I think the district did a great job of being transparent in the planning and where the budget is, but now that the chickens have come back to roost, the actuals landing where the budget is, I think it would be helpful, I mean, the pictures are great, but I think seeing where the budget is on these projects, and then the actuals would be super helpful. Cause I read an article that the, the, uh, amount that we spent on the high school was two-hundred-and-twenty-six million, which is about fifty-seven percent of the four-hundred million, which sounds like a lot, but I mean, if you go through the high school, there, there's a lot, there's a lot there, I mean, it's a beautiful high school. So I think somehow, uh, if, if staff could reconcile the, whatever the, whatever we had planned on the budget, and then the actuals by facility, I think would be, would be helpful. If you could consider doing that, I think it would be helpful.
Yeah, appreciate that, and there is a combination of bond and LTFM in all of these projects, and so, um, that's a big portion of that. Is sep, is fleshing that out, so that people can see what the, what bond investment was versus bond and LTFM are two very different numbers.
Right, thank you, but, thanks, guys.
All right, Scott, I have one thing.
Yes, go ahead.
I was just gonna mention the Central Middle School Community Open House will be held on Wednesday, September twenty-fourth at four-thirty. It'll last for a couple of hours that evening, and that's homecoming week, so there's a lot going on. So that's being run in conjunction with the, is that the talent show that night at the high school? So, uh, you get a tour of Central Middle School, including the renovated old district center, the original height, White Bear height, well, not quite the original White Bear High School, but it was one before that, correct?
The first, it was the first. It was the first school built as a high school.
Yeah, yeah, built in nineteen-eighteen, so it's back to a, back to a school now, so we, we really need to see that. So again, that's on Wednesday, September twenty-fourth, uh, starting at four-thirty and lasting till about six-thirty.
And that's Dr. Kazmicek's strategy for putting subtle pressure on Kraus Anderson to continue to get all the work done.
Ms. Thompson?
I don't have a, it, this is silly, but I gotta say it anyways, cause you said the work was done at light speed, but maybe faster, so would that be warp speed?
I, I think it would be, yeah, definitely.
I just always, it's fun to, A, it's amazing work that we're doing, I'm so thankful for the community supporting this. Um, but you always bring fun to this part of it, and I think that's great. And I, I appreciate all the extra work you do to bring those, cause you know that we like them, so I think you kinda try to find them every time, and I appreciate that, so thank you.
I love the, I love the umbrellas on the playground, that makes so much sense with, with the sun and the kids and all of that. Oh, yeah, my son, sorry.
Your microphone's not on.
Okay, I like the umbrellas. If you didn't hear, they're really nice for the kids and to protect them from the sun and so on. Um, what about, I'm just curious about what is actually in the tunnels under Sunrise? I mean, why do we have tunnels? You were saying how many we, uh, they're not under every school, right? Or are they? Yeah?
They're under most, actually.
Oh, okay, all right.
So sometimes we'll reuse the tunnels for the mechanical, electrical, plumbing systems. Uh, basically, it's just a way to hide all the things that might be above ceiling or in the slab, but do it inside a tunnel.
Got it.
But then also provide like some form of accessibility, so that way when, hopefully, you don't have to maintain it. But at some point, you will, that there's a clean way to get to it, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so most schools do, well, thanks. Heard something new?
And I just, I just wanna say thank you, um, having spent three years in this building without any real air conditioning or cooling, and then three years over at Mariner with the windows that don't open and no cooling. Um, this is awesome, cause now where students can get in there and can actually focus on learnings, because they're not worried about how warm they are and that, so thank you very much.
I'll add one thing on the tunnel. My father-in-law taught here for thirty-five years or something like that, and, um, there were a few occasions where he'd be teaching in the middle of the class, and up would, a panel would come, and a student's head would pop up out of the, uh, out of the floor, and be like, how'd, you know, how'd you get in there? I went through the tunnel system, you know, so it was kind of funny. He's got more stories than that, but that's another thing.
Here at Sunrise?
I just wanna say, it wasn't me.
Wasn't you.
Okay. All right, anything else? Thank you very much for everything. Um, we're gonna go on now to D two, it's the, um, White Bear Lake Area High School radon testing report. Mr. Wald and Mr. Fernandez?
Yes, thank you, Chair Arcan. Uh, this was actually a really good segue from Ms. Ellison's comments earlier about safety of our school buildings. And, uh, so we're gonna provide an update on radon testing report. And with us tonight is Kevin Klecker, Emergency and Safety Supervisor. So I'll turn it over to Kevin to walk us through it.
All right, hopefully, uh, I'm not as. Danny, I don't have fun pictures and stories to share with you guys, but, um, good evening, Chair Arcan, members of the board, and Superintendent Kazmicek, thanks for having me today. Um, I'm going to be presenting a few slides, just talking about some radon testing that we just recently completed, so, um. It's important to know, um, radon testing in schools is a, is a very important thing we do for our student safety. Radon is a, it's a colorless, it's odorless, it seeps in through the ground, right? So it's, it's something that can happen, like carbon monoxide, where it's happening, you don't even know what's happening. And especially the little kids that like to crawl on the ground where that radon would seep in, it, you know, it, it's a, it's a risk. So we do test regularly for that. Long-term exposure is actually the second-leading cause of lung cancer. So we don't want our kids to experience that, we don't want our staff to experience that, or even the families that are in our buildings. Um, especially cause, um, children are actually more susceptible to that just due to their, their systems growing and developing, and being most closer to the ground, so. So radon testing is part of our, our district's health and safety programs, amongst other programs. We do lead and water testing, we do indoor air quality testing, um, amongst a lot of other things as well. But, um, it is something we do on a five-year rotating basis, so, uh, we, we hit every school within those five years. Uh, we do adjust it with construction, so the high schools actually do the previous year, um, but because it was under construction, it wouldn't have been, um, it wouldn't have been effective to test it during that process, cause they had a lot of ceilings open, a lot of, a part of the building torn up and under construction. So, um, we did adjust that last year, and then next year, we, we have the four buildings that are currently under construction slotted to be tested for radon, so that would be Central, Mariner, um, North Star, and Sunrise. North Star, what, hadn't been done since it was opened, so they're due for it as well. So, uh, this is something that comes as a recommendation from the Minnesota Department of Health and the EPA. They highly, highly recommend that you do complete regular testing for radon in our buildings, um, as well as in our houses and all the other places we are. But it is a voluntary plan that's highly encouraged and recommended. So, um, that's why we do it on a five-year rotating basis instead of annually or something like that, because, um, it's, it doesn't change that frequently if there's not construction, so. Um, there's a statute that says if we do test for radon, that we do need to report it to the board, um, and that's why I'm here tonight, sharing it with you guys. So we'll go through the results briefly. Um, but first, I wanted to talk about, um, our, our safety partner is IEA, um, that's the Institute for Environmental Assessment. They are a Minnesota-based organization, they're, they've been very supportive of our health and safety programs. They help us do a lot of testing, um, and problem-solving when we do come across things. Um, they do specialize in schools, so if, if you talk to other school districts, I would say at least half of them, or maybe even more, um, are partnering with IEA on some of these different projects. And then they send those, those, um, test samples into an accredited third-party lab for independent testing. So at the high school, we, we did send in, um, so this process is very, um, laid out, um, how we test for radon, and then how we have to alert everybody in the building, so we post things on the doors, we send out information to, to families and staff, letting them know this is happening. And we do that for a couple different reasons. The most important is that these little test packets, the little pouches, they're gonna be all around the building, and if they're tampered with, we have to retest. Um, so you'll see we'd have three-hundred-and-thirty-one test kits, um, placed in the building, um, and in two-hundred-and-seventy-three locations, because there are requirements for redundancies, um, just to check to make sure those tests are coming back accurately. Um, so this is short-term, three-day test, and then anything over four pico carries, um, per liter would be an actionable amount. So we would have to look into, uh, either a passive or an active radon mitigation system. Um, so we did, um, included in the, uh, the information provided tonight, we do have the results for each individual space. Um, but in summary, uh, it was a very positive, um, result. We did not, um, nothing achieved anywhere over one-point-nine pico carries per liter. So of the two-hundred-and-sixty-six tests that were, um, um, left in place and measured, everything was under that one-point-nine. So it was very low, most of them are actually under, um, or a lot of them are under point-oh-three, so very, very low results. Um, so at this point with the high school, we are, you know, we don't have any active concerns with radon, and we'll continue testing next year with those four buildings I listed on the last slide. And then I just have some links, um, going to the EPA recommendations, the MDH guidelines, and then the statute that requires us to report this to you guys. I'm here at the board.
Thank you. Do we have any questions? Mr. Scott?
So thanks for the report, appreciate it. So have we ever had a radon, a reportable radon issue in the past?
Not since I've been monitored, like, part of the process, um, I'm sure we've had.
So how long is that, since, how long have you been here?
So I've been here since two thousand and eighteen. Um, I did not take over kind of managing the health and safety programs until just a few years ago.
Okay, do we know if we've had any?
No, I'm not aware.
Okay.
I'm not aware that we've had any, since I've been in this position just one year longer than he, and you recall any before that?
Typically, I did look back at the previous results, um, so because of how, um, the, the pandemic happened, we didn't test for a few years, and then we went back and tested almost every building to get us back caught up. Um, and I looked through those results, we didn't have any above the, the action level at that point either. Um, you know, typically, our buildings are above grade, you know, we have the few instances, um, like Venice Heights in the lower level that are slightly below grade or, grade, or even at Mariner Middle School, where it's partially below grade, and that's typically underground is where you would see the high levels. Um, typically, when you're above grade, it's not as, not as frequent that you would see issues.
So just, just a comment on how important it is for staff, teachers, uh, for their indoor air quality, because they're, they're typically more than students are. Uh, this is just a personal story, a friend of mine's wife worked at, uh, Cleveland Public Schools, and she ended up dying of lung cancer, never smoked, but it was because of the school. So I think, you know, what you're doing, monitoring this, it's a requirement, but I think keeping our air clean is really important, not just to the students, but also to the staff, so I just wanna make that comment.
Appreciate it. Great, thank you. Any other questions or comments?
I just ran to recognize Mr. Scott saying that, cause that was one thing I wanted to recognize, too, is that we have a lot of other, um, our students are obviously, but staff and other people that are in their buildings, and just making sure everyone's safe is really important, so, thank you.
And, and aside from the annual testing, I will mention, you know, when we have concerns brought to us, we will do spot testing as needed. If, cause the staff are concerned about things, we, we frequently will go and, and partner with a testing company and check in it, whether it's lead or air quality, or mold, any of those items that could affect us on a daily basis.
Scott, just one other, just a curious, do we have an industrial hygienist on staff, or do we sub that, sub that out?
We do not, that is IEA, um, that our main partner is a certified industrial hygienist.
All right, thank you.
Yep.
All right, well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We are gonna move on to discussion item D three, summary of the superintendent's evaluation. The school board did meet with Superintendent Dr. Kazmicek on July fourteenth to conduct his annual performance evaluation. Dr. Kazmicek continues to meet the board's expectations in key areas, including leadership for continuous improvement of student achievement, communications, stakeholder engagement, fiscal responsibility, school facilities, and the implementation and development of district policies. Together, Superintendent Kazmicek and the school board have identified the following priorities for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. Create and sustain, sustain a safe, equitable, and nurturing, nurturing environment. Promote and support students' personal learning experience and aspirations. Ensure the organization continuously evolves to fulfill its mission. Establish healthy and vital engagement with our entire community. Maintain strong fiscal management and implement of the district facility plan. Uh, the school board extends its appreciation to Dr. Kazmicek and his cabinet for their continued leadership and dedication during this exciting time for our district. Okay, and so we're gonna move on now to, um, D four. First reading of the school board policies, four-fourteen and five-sixteen-point-five. These policies have been reviewed by the policy committee, and they will come back to us on September eighth, or a, uh, or another meeting for a second reading. If you have any questions, please give me the page number, so we can follow along.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Mr. Scott.
We've, um, were we supposed to approve agenda item E two?
This is discussion, so no, there was no approval on those.
Just.
This is just discussion.
Okay, so we're, okay. Thank you.
Okay, so have we, any other questions for the first reading? If not, we will bring those back next month. Um, and if you, between there and now, if any board member has a question, feel, please feel free to reach out to Dr. Kazmicek, and what's your question? Okay, we're gonna move on to the operational items, we're gonna move on to E one. Action on proposed substitute teaching rate change, Mr. Mons?
Good evening. Um, tonight, I am asking for the board to approve the recommendation that we move our teacher substitute rates from one-hundred-and-eighty-five dollars per day to one-hundred-and-ninety, along with the corresponding half-day rate change, and for our retired teachers who are coming back to sub for us, moving that from one-hundred-and-ninety-five to two-hundred dollars per day. Um, every year, we, uh, reach out and we look at, um, neighboring districts to see where we're at relative to their pay rates, and, um, this will keep us in a competitive position with the, with our neighboring districts.
Any questions? Yes, Mr. Scott?
What does keeping it in a compet, competitive mean?
Um, this will keep us in about, uh, the top third.
The top third?
Of the districts around us, yes. We don't wanna be, um, right at the average and certainly not below. It's a really competitive market, and, um, it, they're very difficult to fill. So we wanna be, you know, near the top of that.
Do we have any issues recruiting at that rate?
Um, we, you know, we're constantly adding to our sub-list. Um, I've been looking at our fill rates, they've actually continued to improve here. We made a switch, um, in our paradigm, we're working with, uh, with another company that's helping with those recruitment efforts, and that has been successful, so we're feeling good about where we'll be, um, with this adjustment.
All right, thank you.
Yep.
Yes.
Do you happen to know offhand what the fill rates are for the?
Um, yes, at the moment here, we've gotten up to eighty-seven percent, um, for our fill rate, uh, which actually, we've been seeing almost a ten percent increase per year for the last three years here, so we're looking to keep moving that in a positive direction.
Yes, go ahead.
Um, do you have building substitutes?
We do, yes. Yep, so we maintain, uh, building substitute at each of our buildings, um, the high school and the ALC share three, um, between them there. And we also make sure that if there's not a need for a building substitute on a particular day, in a particular building, that they're, uh, going to another site, because there's really never a day that we're not using all of our building substitutes, and then some.
Any other questions? So before us, we have the proposal to increase our subpay. Uh, can I get a motion?
So moved?
And a second?
Second.
Second by Thompson, any further discussion? This will be a, this will be a roll call vote, will the clerk please call the roll?
Ellison?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Strife Oji?
Aye.
Thompson?
Aye.
Arcan?
Aye.
Daniels, aye.
Okay, motion carried, thank you very much. All right, we're gonna move on to act, uh, operational item E two, it's a superintendent contract. Uh, it, we have the opportunity tonight to approve a three-year contract from July first, twenty-twenty-sixth, to June thirty-first, twenty-twenty-nine with Superintendent, uh, Kazmicek, Dr. Kazmicek. And so per the, per Minnesota, um, that, a statute, one-two-three-B point-one-four-three, we could enter into negotiations now, and we have come to a tentative agreement, and I knew I did send that out to you. Um, so the recommendation is to approve the three-year contract. So the recommendation is to approve the three-year contract. Can I get a motion to do that?
So moved.
By Ellison, is there a second?
Second.
Second, any discussion?
Can I just?
Yes.
Dr. Arcan?
Yeah.
Can I just amend to say that it should be through June 30th, 2029? Because there's no June 31st.
We just added a day, I guess. Yes, June 30th, we'll make sure it's in there correctly.
Thank you.
Any other, other questions or discussion? Okay, this will be a roll call vote, I'll ask the clerk to call the roll.
Ellison?
Aye.
Scott?
I'm going to abstain, because I wasn't at that meeting when you did the review.
Strife Oji?
Aye.
Thompson?
Aye.
Arcan?
Aye.
Daniels, aye.
Motion carried. All right, we're going to move on to operational item E3, which is action on the school board policies 418, 501, 503, 515, 516, 534, 621, 707, 709, 802, and 806. Now normally, as I remind you, we do this in one swoop together. Can I get a motion to approve the policies?
So moved.
By Thompson, a second?
Second.
Second by Ellison, any discussion? I just want to say once again, thank you to the policy committee for continually looking and reviewing, I know there's a lot of work that gets into it, thank you for that. So, this will be a voice vote, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. All right, we are on to board forum. This is an opportunity for board members to talk about things coming up in the district or things that we're doing. Does anybody have any forum?
Oh, Ms. Danny.
Oh, Ms. Danny, sorry, I didn't see her.
That's okay, I attended the family event up at the high school on Saturday, this last Saturday, August 9th, where there was a backpack giveaway to families in need, and the closet, the school, the educational foundation closet provided clothing for people to pick up if they wanted to, there was a free meal provided by a private person, there were registration for classes, there was, the Bear Care, Bear Care was there giving vaccinations or physicals, so we just had lots of things going on, it was well-attended by many, many families, and I want to thank everybody who volunteered there, and also thank in particular the Community of Grace Church, who provided 350 backpacks that they filled and brought, delivered, and families picked up, so I just want to give a shout-out to them for their generosity. I know there were other people too, there are other individuals that also contributed, so I want to thank them too, but that was a, quite a big contribution by Community of Grace, so it was a great event for families, and I, I just think it's a wonderful thing that the community does to help neighbors.
Thank you, yes, Ms. Ellison?
I just wanted to say thank you to the community services, Mr. Maurer isn't even here to hear my accolades. It's so, so much work to put together summer programs for, for students and adults, and I think it, it's really a tremendous gift to the community to have opportunities for students to go out and play sports and do other various things. So I just wanted to say thank you for everybody who was involved in community service, and then I also wanted to, to thank everybody who's getting ready for the school year, because I think if you've never been in education, you don't quite know how much it takes to get a school year started. And so, thank you to all the, the coaches, like Dr. Kasmercheck said, sports started today, and then, you know, the cabinet and the staff and the teachers who are all getting ready for the school year, it's a ton of work, and so, I, I mean, thank you, because I'm, I will be ready in three weeks to send my children off to school, so, so, thank you everybody.
Anybody else?
I was going to say, I always felt as an educator and as a parent, that August was like a big Sunday night, the whole month was like getting ready for the school year, so it's like a month of just the, the preparedness, the anxiety, the wondering, the getting things, purchasing things, and all the things that go into getting a family launched, a classroom launched, a community launched, a district launched, so I agree with your comments.
Yeah, Mr. Scott?
Well, I just want to thank you, Scott, on that Ramsey County League of.
Ramsey County League of Local Governments.
Okay, well, I was close.
Yeah.
Okay, I got about 80% of it right, which usually, usually for me is good enough, but, you know, Scott's hosted that, he's done a great job of hosting, he's a legend there, people are going to miss him, I'm going to take over, it's not going to be easy for me to take over, so I just want to thank you, he's done a really nice job of setting that up and making sure that we connect with our other folks in Roseville, Ramsey County, things like that, so thank you very much. And then I just wanted to ask about this, you know, we live in a world of complexity, right? It's, it's a sys, we're systems of systems. So we have this cyber incident that happened in the city of St. Paul, the city of St. Paul's systems are connected to Ramsey County, we probably have handshakes to Ramsey County, so I would just, did we do anything to raise awareness around this? Did we do any assessments, those types of things? Maybe you don't have to answer that now, but maybe, maybe at the next meeting, we can talk, talk about that, if we had any issues with that, or what actions we took related to that.
And we could take that off to a different time.
Sure.
It doesn't really fit in for, the forum, but, so we can make sure that we note that, and then if you have.
Right.
Further questions, let Dr. Kasmercheck.
Yeah, I may not fit into the forum all the times.
Yeah.
So, I realize that.
School's going to be starting soon, and I want to say, this is why we're here, this is the business we're in of our children, and it's an exciting time, and another year, and I'm excited for it. Go Bears!
Go Bears!
All right, so right now, I am at the adjournment, can I get a motion to adjourn? Mr. Scott, can I get a second?
Second.
Ellison, all right, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried, thank you, we are now adjourned.